To comply of the United States of America and to the Republic where worship stands, one nation, united on, individual, with our team justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, well, I'll make foot for motion to.
Can you change this?
Don't.
Motion to approve. Sorry.
First and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, approve the minutes from eleven thirty.
The minutes look good, the only thing I need to have changed is Dawn's last name where there's a P that should be a T. That's, that's clear, that's clear.
Oh.
And I did make that change for you ahead of time, Sandy, since you had told me about it.
Okay, okay, so it is okay. I just did one of them.
Yeah, on the one that goes to the paper, it's okay, not on your copy.
All right.
I'll second Sandy's motion.
So I'll make motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the minutes, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Down public concerns. Nobody on the Zoom call, it looks. Nobody in the room here. So we'll move on. Uh, do you want to start Ben, or do you, should we go do some of these other things first?
Uh, that is completely up to you guys.
I think we should probably get started, because we have lots of things to go through.
Yeah, it's looking pretty cold today.
Yeah.
The, um, the first item that I have on the agenda is to approve the hiring of county employee. Uh, we did interviews the week of Thanksgiving. Offered to a kid pending board approval today to, uh, Colby Miller of Livermore. He's working for the elevator there in Livermore.
It sounds like you're stealing elevator employees.
Yeah. Um, I talked to him over the weekend, he said pending board approval, his start date could be the twenty-first of this month.
Okay.
We had, uh, six applicants, we interviewed all of them.
Do you think that's starting, are you going to pay Ben?
Uh, it'll be the apprentice rate.
Okay.
Uh.
We can look that up for you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what that is off the top of my head.
Okay.
He said there's a chance he could start earlier than that, he said the elevator is notorious for letting you go when you turn your two weeks in.
Yeah, that's probably a slower time for him now, anyway.
Right.
He's in Livermore?
He's in Livermore, yep.
Well, that'll work out good for him, the way it looks.
Yeah. Hopefully we get him in and get him behind the wheel before we start saying that white stuff.
Yeah, hopefully we don't see much of that this year, so he gets an easy year to start off.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Kobe Miller.
I'll second with the clarification of when the, everything cleared.
Yep. He's already done, uh, Friday, we had him come in and do a pre-screening and DOT physical.
Okay.
So far, it's already done.
Does he already have his CDL?
He's already got a Class A CDL, uh, he's got quite a few endorsements above what we want, including hazmat and.
Awesome.
That's great.
Just tell him, don't lose that.
Yeah.
I let my hazmat go, and it's probably one of the worst things I ever did, because now you gotta go through all the different fingerprinting and all of that stuff that goes along, and I wish I'd have kept it.
Kept it up.
Some chemicals that you have to have to also.
And, and coming from the, the co-op, uh, he's got a lot of his, uh, applicator licenses as well.
Oh.
He's just gotta take the, he's got his core covered, so all he's gotta do is take the roadside portion.
Okay, that's good. Uh, we have a first and a second, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next two items that I've got on the agenda are approve, approve applications to work in the county's right-of-way. I believe the first one is for Dial Erickson. Uh, this is on your, your DB thirty-five project, uh, that King Construction did. He's got an intake. Um, I'd say probably between ten and fifteen rows out in the field, just north of a hundred and ninety street. Basically, it's in an inconvenient place for him with his planter. He wants to move it closer to the edge of the right-of-way and then put some, uh, riprap around it and extend some of that rock into the county's right-of-way.
Okay.
Ninety-five percent of the work will be on private property, but a little bit will be on the edge of the county's property.
Okay. Is there currently a, uh, intake in the ditch here too?
Yes.
I thought there was.
Yep. And there's a, a box culvert, uh, like a, I think it's like a three-by-three box culvert, remember the road right there too?
Okay.
Everybody else is in order?
Yeah, other than he didn't know which, uh, if he'd be doing the work himself, or if Harry Jensen would be. And I told him, I said, well, if you're gonna do the work, and I said, we've got Jensen's proof of insurance, but if you're gonna do the work, we need a copy of your.
Right.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that work in the right-of-way for Dial Erickson.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries. Okay, now we got something with Brent Keenest for prior, private tile crossing.
Yes. Uh, Brent's looking at doing a, a private tile crossing on Quebec Avenue, I believe it's between sections fourteen and fifteen. Uh, he wants to basically put in a, a private main fifteen-inch crossing the road, and it'll end up going into the drainage ditch east of Quebec Avenue. Uh, Nell Peterson out of Badger is his contractor, we've got their copy of, of insurance.
You gonna get her done here quick, soon?
He hopes so, uh, Scott still had a couple of jobs ahead of him when he filled out the permit here, uh, a week ago, or a week and a half ago. But he was hoping Scott would get there before we get frost setting in the ground.
Okay. Because they get a little too frosty, don't you make them backfill with rock cream?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Typically, we don't allow road crossings after November fifteenth, but this year's been mild so far, and there's no, there's no frost in the ground, we're still digging ditch.
Yeah.
Uh, we've been allowing these to proceed later than we normally would.
Okay.
Subject to what the weather does?
Yes, yep.
Hopefully, we can dig all winter.
That'd be great, that'd be great if we did, we've, we've got plenty of work lined up to be able to do. And with this, uh, type of tile crossing, obviously, we, we make them fill out a, a, a separate permit besides this application that, that you guys have, where they have to get their downstream property owner to sign off on it, it's spelled out what's what material they need to use, because they're asking for their two thousand dollar reimbursement.
So they'll probably put fifteen-inch concrete through the road, Ben, here?
Yes, yep. They'll put fifteen-inch concrete through the, the main travel portion of the road. Roughly forty-five foot on this stretch. And then they can tie into it with dual wall on either side. Sandy, I've got a copy sitting at your desk.
Okay, check Ben.
So, but we make the downstream property owner sign off on this as an agreement. Uh, they also sign off on. They also sign off on, uh, signage, saying that they're either gonna provide their signing, or or, or will have it available for them, they can borrow. And so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the other application for the right-of-way for Brent Keenest across section fourteen, fifteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
All right, Ben, and now, I, being we're talking about this, I have a quick question on this, and I see, but I'm gonna let the person know that I asked you. All the criteria, all the steps for doing tile crossing across the road are, are spelled out. So whether the contractor, whether the farmer, when he come in and fill this off, that was the question from a person, wanted to know if everything was set up, so that, um, they knew exactly what they were expected to do, and I, you have it, so.
So in, um, in September, when we updated our, uh, pricing to, uh, two thousand dollars, fifty percent up to two thousand dollars for gravel road, and fifty percent up to fifteen for boring under highway. We also, uh, updated our permit application, because it was like six or seven pieces of paper that we were giving the contractor, and it just became confusing.
Uh-huh.
So we combined everything that was in those six or seven pieces of paper, and compared with Webster and Hamilton County as far as what their policies were in Cassuth County, and we updated our policy, including some of the language that all of them carry. Hamilton County is in the process of updating theirs to almost identical of ours. And Webster County, I talked to them last week, they're gonna update their pricing limits to pricing similar than ours, they found out last week that their fifty percent up to five thousand was grossly under what it cost to bore underneath the highway.
Yeah.
So we're ahead of, we're, we're ahead of Webster County for one, yeah. Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, you know, just to clarify things, what we have here is the simple process for a road crossing. There's other ways to get it, where you can have the county pay for the entire bill, but it's a more lengthy and more difficult process to go through.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
The quick and the easy way for gravel road crossings, it's pretty much the same, you just don't have to go through all the legal pro, proceedings.
Right, I mean, we're not, we're not trying to contradict Iowa code, which says the county will pay for everything uh, through the, the travel portion of the roadway with funds that are available. Uh, it's just to follow that chapter four sixty-eight and the individual drainage laws, there's a bunch of steps that they have to go through, where we offer basically a, a don't ask, don't tell.
Quick and easy way to do it.
Quick and easy way to process through.
Good.
This is, this is, this is the alternative option.
They don't have to take this.
They don't have to take this, but they can't.
Later in the agenda, we've got, uh, the group that wants to go the other way.
Uh-huh.
But that's been, I think, a year in the making for, for them to get the other way.
And they're also going through the steps in order to, they asked for the hearing, they're set the hearing, and all the steps that have to go through.
Right, and I believe they, they finally requested a hearing with the auditor's office, and that's a little bit lower in the agenda to, to set a hearing date
Yeah.
for that one.
So, just wanted to make that clear, that we're not trying to avert.
We're, we're not trying to avert the, the Iowa code, you're exactly right, we're, we're just offering a faster alternative than the
Lengthy process.
The lengthy process that's taken, that's taken a year
Right.
to get to this point with the other group.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring that up, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay. All right, well, it looks like we got that part taken care of. Uh, the public hearing has to wait till nine. Um, this thing down here with, uh, Humble Webster, that's not a joint meeting, is it, does anybody know? I don't think it is.
I don't think so.
No, we still probably should wait till nine-thirty, so let's go down to the bottom and do discussion and action on the signing of the Rolling Hills memorandum of understanding. Now, this is something we talked about last week, but I don't, I don't think it was on the agenda for the signing, is that correct, Peggy, that's why it's here again?
Right, the reason why we pressed by the last week was because, um, the majority of their, um, county on the, uh, Rolling Hills Board had not approved the, um, the MO two, um, but, uh, Dawn got ahold of Peggy and I, and, and said, uh, it is now, uh, it's on our shift, but the majority of their, um, county board has approved the, um, the MO two for Humble County.
Was it a unanimous thing, or was it just a majority?
Right now, they just, she just wanted to get it, um, so we could get it on all.
Oh, okay.
So she could start working on the budget, you know, because that's the big thing right now, so it's the majority, she's when I talked to her, most issues that all of them are going to approve, it's, it's offers that maybe not, I mean, carpet might be, if there's, if there's gonna be someone who doesn't know it's being offered, now.
Okay.
Um, and all the other ones, when I was, uh, the Zoom meeting, and they were all very hot about having, uh, both Humble and Humble County.
So both the honors did yes also?
Yeah, we, we, we went to the meetings together, kind of as a, a joint candidate, uh, thing, uh, just like, uh, Sarah Gordon, Webster, and then Riley together with the guys, and, 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 uh, uh, passage.
Okay.
Both, both men felt very comfortable with Rolling Hills, and what they have to offer, what, what will help us.
Okay. Well, we're entertaining motion.
Yes, I just made the motion for, uh, memorandum of understanding for the Rolling Hills, uh, service region of mental health.
Okay, we have a first from Sandy.
Did Sandy want to amend that to the vice chair, since Eric is not here?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, the vice chair.
Yeah, he probably didn't know that.
Yep. I thought it was the chair of missing, but it's.
Yeah, yeah, the funeral to attend today.
You seconded Dave?
I seconded.
Dave from seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous, motion carries. Okay, now I have accept in place and file the quarter report for general assistance for twenty twenty-one.
I do not have that, I don't know if we're supposed to call Kathy, we can. Have you signed this? I'll cross off there, can put your name in. Good morning, is Kathy in this morning? Okay, this is Peggy. We're looking for the quarterly report to approve, we don't have a copy here. All right, thank you, bye. She'll bring it down.
Okay, well, we'll step down for the next one, accept in place and file the annual report for a second judicial, district department of correctional services.
And that is up in your papers on the table.
Next thing up here. And that's something that we've kind of just requested that, they wanted us to have a file of it, copy of it, if I remember right.
Yep.
It's something that the board approves, that every county gets a copy, so I think it's just a formality. Come on, look at it.
I guess, I'm assuming all is in order with it.
I think Eric sits, Erickson on that board?
Yes.
Yeah, he does.
The board gave it to me, yeah.
Okay. And he, I seen him this morning, if there would have been a problem, I'm sure he would have let me know.
I would accept, make a motion to accept in place and file the report from the second judicial.
We have a first.
I'll second.
Second from Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, motion carries. Okay, now we down here, we have, uh, discussion and set date and time for public hearing on the drain, oh, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a drainage.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move down to committee reports.
All right, on Thursday's, uh, third, I had ministerial, uh, meeting. It was following, I guess, conference call, the adjustments on, uh, going on with the food pantry. And Thursday night on Thursday, also, I had a CFR, um, and an executive meeting at five, and a regular meeting started at six. With drainage meeting on Friday, I did not attend that, so that was all I had for the week.
Was that also conference call too?
Yep, they were.
Sandy, you go.
Um, Wednesday the second, I had a Zoom meeting with, um, county social services HR committee. Uh, went over some, a couple of their policies, and, um, approved a, a position. With the children coming on, they're gonna be having the children's behavior health coordinator, um, so that's, uh, on, uh, that position still. And then also, um, there was a White House COVID nineteen conference call, that happened every week, they have a pair of TV's, and, um, Dr. Deborah Frich was on there, um, again, and, and it's all been on the news, they're, they, they talked about, that, uh, you know, this she's very concerned about family and small gatherings are the big threats right now. Uh, we need to always social distance where I'm at, even when we're inside now, uh, she highly recommends that with, uh, they don't even know, uh, Memphis won't have, uh, Thanksgiving, um, numbers until probably another week. Um, but there's, she's traveled, um, and gathering, and all that. Um, then the other person in court that talked was Dr. Prost, she, and she talked about the vaccine process, wanted to make sure that we as public officials, that we're constantly talking about how safe the vaccine is. Uh, the process for the, um, uh, files, or for the procedures to be approved, is they didn't fast-track anything, the only thing they did was they moved ahead of other drugs that were in the process. That's why they called it war speech, because they turned ahead of everything else that was already in the works. So they just wanted to constantly be talking about how safe it is, and that is very, very important, that everybody gets vaccinated once it's approved, and that their, uh, criteria, that, you know, there's kind of by different levels, who gets, who gets it first, and they, they give their vaccination. Um, and the other thing was, uh, Dr. Reddick talked about the distribution of, uh, uh, vaccines, and that it actually happens to the governors. They've given guidelines to the governors, but it is up to the governors to be able to decide. And then Thursday, there was a, a, an auditor's town hall, um, Rob Stan, and very nice, um, person. Um, he, he wanted, wanted to meet with all, all county officials. Um, uh, Ben and I participated in that, and, and we talked about different things, but a lot of it was about accountability of, of money and things like that. He has also, uh, for, he's got a new initiative, it's called the PIE initiative, it's called, uh, Public Innovative Efficiency. His, uh, he wants to be able to reward counties for, um, being efficient and looking for ways to save money, and then he wants, um, all the counties to, uh, put forth what they did, um, as far as efficiency, and so that other counties will know what they're doing, and then they can all be a part of it, and then he's actually gonna put it out as a contest, and that, uh, the ones who win, they will get pie for their playoffs. And he'll come down and, and give it to everybody for pie. That's all I had.
Okay, on, uh, Thursday, I had a Pathfinder's meeting. And, uh, that's Midas, new names Pathfinder's, and, uh, I guess sometime in January, Kathy wants to come and visit with who's appointed to that committee, or phone to, in front of all of us, so what they have to offer, so they'll be calling you on that.
Was that by phone, or by?
That was phone, yeah, so. Saturday morning, I went up to talk to a guy up in, on Montana. Burned trash and garbage in the ditch, told him he couldn't do that, uh, they had complaints on it, I guess. You might want to keep an eye on eighteen fifty. Up by Kellings, south of Kellings.
Mm-hmm, we've signed letters in the past.
Yeah, they're still burning in the ditch, and it's right between two culverts.
Okay.
So, told him he couldn't do that, system diseased, get it cleaned out of there, and.
And most of us, they live out in country, we just got a couple of burn barrels that we.
He had barsboard and pallets and all kinds of crap in the ditch there where he burnt, you can see where he burnt before, because of the grass and stuff. Told him he couldn't do that, and that's, that's all I had.
Okay, uh, Friday, uh, the fifth?
Fourth.
I went down to IDVA meeting for Dodge. Um, we, I got re-elected as vice chair, Barry Anderson was re-elected from Platte County.
Was it a line fight?
It was a line fight. It was unanimous. We had fifteen people there, so we just met the guidelines, thank goodness no one else showed up, otherwise we had plans of splitting into two rooms and having two separate meetings. Or ask that person to leave. So, that went well, um, we're legislative, um, oh, here they are. Uh, the, what they're pushing back, basically the same things they had last year because of the legislative session being cut short, nothing much happened, it's, we're trying to get our, our, uh, work orders bumped up to one thirty-nine, before you have to have an engineer's report for any kind of repair. Uh, currently, it's at fifty thousand. Uh, they're pushing for not having to publicize, uh, all this drainage stuff, levy stuff in the papers. That's part of it again, um, the wetlands funding for the crep programs, they're trying to ask for more money for that, because that hasn't been raised for years. And, um, and also, they're backing the three-eighths of a cent sales tax thing for clean water. And, um, that's about it. Nothing, no really, because we had no speakers there, it was just a business meeting, went through the budget, um, we had about a six, six thousand dollar surplus in the budget from last year, so everything's pretty even keel right now on that, so I don't see any changes there. And then we, uh, oh, we did talk about, uh, the federal fish and wildlife service. How they don't pay drainage assessment, even though a lot of their tiles go through their properties and and drain their properties when they want them drained, and, um, or actually feed their water to their properties. But, uh, they never pay any drainage assessment, and they probably never will, but they thought we should talk to legislators about, you know, asking them again. I know it's been brought to Grassley's attention before, but it hasn't gone anywhere, but they're gonna bring it up with the legislators of Iowa, that, that's something they should push. That's about it, we adjourned, and, well, I'm like my nice little plastic pizza cutter. So.
Kathy, you there?
Yeah.
Get her.
All right, Kathy, you want to come up and give us our quarterly report on general assistance?
Thank you.
Yeah, there's nothing out of the ordinary to report for the first quarter, um, pretty quiet, actually, in terms of requests for assistance, um, three, um, three approvals for rental assistance. The last, I would say probably four to six weeks, we've had a lot of requests to get for rental, primarily, I mean, Edmo, through their supports and services, handled a good share of the utility, we do have one that's. We do have one that's pending, um, on a request that I don't think will. She has to get us some information yet, but, um, had a lot of calls, interestingly, probably about the last couple of months for just general things like Medicaid, where do I, where do I apply, how do I apply? Um, people struggling with doing the online stuff, you know, still wanting some paper information, so we've kind of fielded a number of those types of calls as well. You know, as long as DHS, how many years have been since they've had a time off this year, you know, people still thinking that that office is here and...
Yeah.
So, so definitely, you know, some of those types of things that we are, um, trying to walk people through, um, just a lot of, a variety of struggles people are having out there, but they seem to be able to, to manage it and sometimes just having a person who's in the community to talk to and help.
Good.
So, um, I also today just wanted to inform the board that, um, our policy is to, to in thirty days, if there's an exception to policy, through general assistance to inform or notify the board. And I did authorize a burial assistance, um, to an out-of-county, um, funeral provider. There were extenuating circumstances, it was a long-term resident of Humboldt County, so definitely I felt was our responsibility, um, to cover that and I did consult with the county attorney and review the situation as well. Um, and he agreed and felt that that was appropriate and what should occur in that situation, so I think, since I've been doing general assistance, I think there's only been one other situation where we, we've done that, so I think we usually use our best, best judgment and get all the information we need before doing something of that nature, so unless the board has in further direction, that's how it continues to go on, but our policy is just that we notify the board if we do that.
Okay.
Through the general assistance program.
So I'm assuming that'll be on the next week's claim then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I probably won't remember, but one of the, should be able to, when we start asking, what's this?
What's this, yeah.
I'll try to remember to remind you.
So, that's with all, nothing else?
Yep, no, nothing else.
Okay.
And make a motion to accept the quarterly report for general assistance, twenty-one.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing it down.
Good day, you just find that time where it says...
Approved.
At the bottom, yeah.
Okay, well, we, it's after nine o'clock, so now we can go into our public hearing on the budget amendment for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, little public hearing.
We have a copy for press, for Ben or anybody on the line.
I have a motion to open the public hearing. Sorry, you got a second, all in favor? Aye. Radio provisions unanimous, public hearing is now open.
Okay, so what you should have in with your packet is the record of hearing and determination on the budget amendment, because I removed this, it's a little easier to talk. When we put the notice in the newspaper as far as the public hearing, it explains some of the reasons that we're amending at this time. So, excuse me, and looking at the, under Public Safety and Legal Services, which is on line eighteen, um, we adjusted that by five thousand dollars and that was to increase some medical examiner fees. On Physical Health and Social Services, line nineteen, we increased it because there was an Edmo billing that came after the fiscal year end, so instead of being paid in last fiscal year, got paid in this year, so it throws the budget off a little bit, so that wasn't a huge amount. Under Roads and Transportation, Ben could probably explain this, this was some of his carryover projects and equipment. I don't know if you want to go into further detail.
Uh, I sure can.
What line, sorry?
Line twenty-two.
Twenty-two, all right, thank you.
Twenty-two and it involves twenty-seven also, doesn't it? Yeah, some of your capital projects.
Majority of the reason for my budget amendment request is construction carryover, like Peggy said, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in construction projects that some have already taken place, some haven't. It's stuff that we had budgeted in last year, but because of our fiscal year ending basically in the middle of construction season, a lot of times our construction carryover rolls, rolls past that first of the fiscal year. So the budgets that I've got on there are the box culvert replacement that we did on State's Avenue, the culvert replacement that we did down on God Park, uh, the culvert replacement that we did on what I'd call C forty-nine extension and the bridge project that we did up on Virginia Avenue, which was out-of-pocket expense that we get reimbursed from the DOT from later. Bridges and culverts up above, Harold Tress did his tile crossing here about a week and a half ago that we permitted, a little over a year ago. They finally got decent weather and did their boring. The, what I call the hefty tile crossing, which is coming up later in the agenda and additional bridge and culvert repairs that we'll be seeing from our bridge inspector. We've, we've spent a lot of time and resources here in the last two months doing repairs to our existing bridges and culverts and I need to bump that money up a little bit. And then, uh, the other major item is new equipment carryover, the two dump trucks that we had agreed to purchase in last fiscal year, which should be showing up next month. Uh, the UTV carryover that I'm still working on specifications for, and then I added a hundred thousand in the new equipment fund for the eventual purchase of a semi-truck and trailer. At the time that I penciled that in, Reese down in Fort Dodge had a, I think it was a two thousand and fifteen Mac with roughly three hundred thousand miles on it, but they were looking at forty thousand for, I was gonna go down and take a look at, but I haven't been down there yet.
Okay.
Okay, and then on line twenty-three, Government Services to Residents, I increased that by five thousand because of our special lost election, local option sales tax. Uh, we knew we were gonna have probably a special election this year, but we had no idea what it was gonna cost and due to COVID and the, the things that we had to have for equipment, as well as, um, we paid our officials hazard pay for that election, so we needed to include some extra in that budget, so that's what the five thousand is. Down on line twenty-seven, under capital projects, um, some of that is, it's up in your room projects, um, the majority of it is the geo-bond proceeds for the conservation dam improvements and the sheriff pages, radios and other equipment. You'll also see up above on line fifteen and the revenues, um, transfers, we put in a thousand and twenty-eight, one thousand and twenty-five hundred. That's the exact number of the money to cover both the conservation dam and the sheriff radios and, um, equipment that they need. So that is in the budget, um, so when bills start coming in...
And the money's there for data.
Yep, it's there. So those are the only changes, it makes an overall difference of about, um, one, one hundred, twelve thousand, three hundred, so that reduces our cash balance. But there will be some other revenues, um, coming in that'll affect, I just, I didn't put all the revenues in, I just wanted to get that main one in for those debt proceeds.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
So, public?
No public here for, public input, nobody on the phone?
Motion to close the public hearing.
There is a call there for a number seven oh four, um, six five four nine 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 seven, I don't know if you know who that is.
Oh, there.
No, I don't.
They should identify themselves, probably, if they are.
All you can do is ask them, if they have questions, speak up now.
Okay.
So the person on the phone line, do they have any questions? Say, hearing done?
Hi, wait, sorry, that number is, uh, sorry about that. That number is just me.
Oh, move on, Evan, oh, you're on another screen, so we thought that was...
Oh, you're on the same screen, Donovan.
Okay.
Yeah, the phone is off, the internet connects properly.
All right, okay, well, we have the discussion on the amendment, we've been through that, we asked for public input, now we're looking for a motion to close. Oh, Dave did have a motion.
They will shut up the hearing.
Did we have a second? So, second from Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's unanimous, motion carries.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty, date twenty-four, approving the Humboldt County budget for twenty twenty-one.
Make the down second.
And a first from Dave, a second from Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote's unanimous, motion carries.
Do they have two copies for you to sign down here, we're at the board chair, and then we'll change that to vice chair for you.
Okay, now I think we need to move into drainage for the...
Kathy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, do you have anything else, Russ?
Um, there's some things for, for to sign.
We'll have to come back if we get down.
Oh, sure. Um, this is the billing for transit assistance with Coke City Bus, you'll okay that, we'll put that in with the bills for next time. These two bills are billings from Dorsey and Whitney for going through the, uh...
Oh, the bonding?
Bonding and, um, yeah, so, twelve thousand on one and eight thousand, seven hundred and three on the other one.
I have one for Peggy and Rick at the time, and then these two for Rick.
Remember Rick?
And these ones were actually in the bond, if I remember right.
Yes.
Little writer's cram.
Yeah.
You stuck there and took that.
Yeah, it's not working, the writer's. Fine. Then I will get these in the Kleyn West for next time. And then I'll go back to Ben.
Okay.
I also have those two for you.
Do you say any still?
Yes, please.
Wait, you're busy today, Rick?
Yeah.
You're ready for next year, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, the teeters are laying next to the, you know what you're gonna...
Yeah. That's for these branches, they're staying fresh, you have them, yeah, have them things, so. All right, so we're looking good, are we, Peggy, now?
Okay. Motion to, motion to go under drainage.
Start it.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, we are moving into drainage.
You've been the, last week when I stopped up and I was going to the place up there?
That can am.
Yeah. And that guy told me he had, well, he had three machines sitting there, so he was just raging about it. I said, well, what do you got coming in? And he goes, um, I got like seventeen coming in and all of them are sold.
Yeah.
I said, what? He goes, everything I have coming for the next, um, I mean, two to three weeks is sold. I said, what, business? He said, it's just crazy. Just absolutely unbelievable for as fast as they can get them in, people are grabbing them and going.
Because people aren't doing vacations and whatnot, they...
Hey, that's a lot of it, that's their vacation, they go out and race around and know things.
Separating people and something they can do.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's been a real popular, things go out west, you know, there's a lot of places out there now that VRBOs or people are renting their cabins out, out in the deserts and...
Five hundred dollars a day, oh, to rent those things. I said, that's just crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how would you go to Colorado or go to Miami or something like that?
We, we rented one and drove it for a day and, to me, I thought it was cheap rent because the stuff we were going over, I can't, I can't imagine when things lasted very long for the way they're viewed.
Yeah, that's something.
We were driving over boulders the size of this desk. It's crazy. They, he says, there, there's trails, I thought, this is a trail? It's just rocks.
The, uh, the other side was, the guy told me once, he says, you know, when you go to buy that boat, if you would've just rented it for the time that you use it, it would've been a lot cheaper.
We carried this out and you went to sign that portion of them?
Do I want to sign it?
Would you, Dave, also?
What about, Rick, can you?
Well, we can get him to, I just tried to invite him.
I'm David.
Well, in that area.
That writer's cram.
That they're closer to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, Trish is in here, so I'm hoping you're ready.
Um, there's any time, but I think, is Dan Edmeyer on the line?
Well, I tell you what, we'll do this one thing down a little lower first.
Okay.
We'll wait till nine thirty, they keep it up, because he's probably planning on being there at nine thirty.
Okay, so...
Okay, so down below here, we have discussion and set date and time for public hearing on the drainage tile crossing. Uh, which road is that, what's the number of that?
Uh, P nineteen.
P nineteen.
I think section seven?
I think you did that.
Yeah, and this is, uh, this is what we call the, the hefty tile crossings for, um, it's, it's a group of, a group of property owners that's looking at running a private tile and, and crossing the counties right away.
Yeah, and Bruce has been just kind of spearheading.
He's been spearheading the, the effort to make this thing go through. Make it go through and, and like we discussed earlier, uh, follow the, the individual drainage law that's in the Iowa Code four sixty-eight, I believe. Which basically says that the county will pay for their portion of, of the road crossing project. They've been going through all the steps that are listed in there and, and one of the first steps is obviously to file petition with the auditor's office and for the board to set a public hearing date, uh, no less than thirty, no more than ninety days from, from their petition, whatever date they petition.
And this is an opportunity for the people involved to state their...
File claims for damages.
Roles or calls.
This would be where adjacent property owners that aren't included in the project could have a chance to file for damages, so if they weren't allowed to be included in this type of tile crossing, this is where they would come forward.
Their time to speak up.
Yeah, this is their time to speak up.
Because the Board of Supervisors does, does have ruling authority over this, we could deny it if we thought it was necessary.
You can negotiate costs, uh, if, if you deem that the costs are too high or that there's no actual benefit.
Well, it's not, not really necessary to have this large of a tile.
Right.
So...
Or if there's no benefit to secondary roads, the board can say, you know what, hmm, how about we pay half or seventy percent or whatever, that's the board's call. Um, uh, the property that the current tile line outlets right now feeds upon, that property owner would have the ability to file for damages because he would no longer have a Um, uh, the property that the current tile line outlets right now feeds upon, that property owner would have the ability to file for damages because he would no longer have a natural water source.
Supply for his pond.
Supply for his pond.
So, his pond could dry up and turn into just a dirt bowl.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so far, all the steps have been taken and ran made in order to get to this process of us setting forty days out from today, right?
However long, between thirty and ninety.
Thirty and ninety.
Which is, I don't know.
And right now, we're only on what, step two? The, the hearing date, I think, is only like step two.
Yeah, yeah, because they have to provide plans, so, um...
Well, that's why I guess, I thought they were already here.
That should be in that packet, that should be...
This is the gist of the...
Okay. Okay.
I'm trying to figure that on the small calendar, we went from today to forty days, and first neither, uh, between the eleventh and the eighteenth of January.
Yeah, and the eighteenth, for some reason, it's got a green thing on, is it a holiday?
Um...
Why is that green up there?
Fourth and thirteenth day.
Oh, thank you, Sandy.
We'll be there.
You're welcome.
But we will be here on that day, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Kind of me.
I would say, um, doing it, I mean, it's not going to get in the ground yet.
No.
No.
Um...
Unless we continue with the spring like what?
Yeah.
I love to see it in January.
Yeah. I would say go later if you could, just because of...
The workload.
Everybody's transition.
The transition in the, in the office over here. That's true, we're gonna, we're gonna have a new drainage clerk in January, hopefully.
Get somebody to get a little familiar with it if we need to.
It'll be eighteen.
Or later.
Or later.
Twenty fifth. Maybe in three weeks to get oriented in the office.
Sixty.
Yeah.
And I doubt if you have a whole lot scheduled for that, so would you pick like nine thirty or something like that, as far as the time?
Yeah.
You want that?
Well, I guess I don't think that we'll probably have, you don't have anything written down that we're gonna do in January that far out.
We'll be starting to work on budget a little bit, but our calendar's fairly open in January.
Do you want to do nine o'clock?
That's fine.
Just to get it out of the way for the rest of our stuff?
Yep, sounds good.
Nine o'clock on the twenty fifth.
Okay, I have a motion to set the date and time at nine o'clock on the twenty fifth. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous, motion carries.
January twenty fifth.
Okay, anything else in drainage before we go up here and deal with McClure?
Hmm, I'm a little late.
Uh, I talked with Eric this morning in that project up on DD eighteen where they're fixing the private tile crossings. They have, I actually drove out there late yesterday afternoon and have one of them done and the other one they dug out and the pipe's laying there to get ready to put back in, so they'll have that fixed up here shortly. So, it looks pretty good. Anything else out there? Okay, well, should we try getting Dan on the phone?
He should be here, I think he was gonna attend to me and soon, um...
Well, he's not there yet, so...
I got a call this morning from a lady in Drainage District four dash fifty nine, um, she was concerned about...
That's Humboldt Webster, isn't it?
Yeah, not getting things leveled yet, just after the clean out and, uh, notified the contractor and he said he tried to get there, he was gonna try to get his equipment there.
Okay.
To make, because it was just done, you know, typically he likes to leave it, let it dry.
Dry, let it dry a little bit, yeah.
So...
Yeah, he finished it probably two months ago.
Should be good.
Should be fine, ready to get leveled out.
Better than that.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Wow. Have you had much for applicants for your job, or anybody talking to you who's interested in it?
A few, yes.
Oh, good.
We had, we've had men and women, so it looks good.
Oh, good.
Simple.
Yeah.
Because I don't know when, uh, I think the cutoff date was Friday.
Oh, this is last Friday?
Good.
Okay, glad you have good interest in it.
I'll pass.
Drainage is always fun, right, Trish?
Yeah. It's interesting, but it's never the same. I'll give you the...
It's too sharp, right?
Yes, it does, you...
You watch.
Every time you think, "Oh, this shit goes smooth," you learn something new.
Right. Do you want me to go call Dan?
Yeah, give him a call.
Okay.
He's already there.
Okay, hang on, hang on.
Yeah, drainage, I never dreamt that there'd be that much involved in drainage as there is.
It is, it's, like you say, everything, every time you think, "Oh, this should be simple," some little thing comes up and it's not. Just like a... That's what it is, it's a learning curve.
Those are coffee working, smells pretty good.
It is good. Yeah. You know, I'm about ready to make a motion that we fire a copy by again.
Oh, he's been...
Oh, there's Dan. Yeah, Trish just stepped out.
To call you.
To call you, I should holler at her. Say, Trish, she's online.
If they don't like the using that, I think we should just get it smaller.
I kinda like it because, well, of course, our booth is a lot smaller now than it used to be.
But they, they painted it.
But to clean it.
Cleaned it. But...
I mean, I don't like growing my own...
You're the man, that one cup's handy.
Yeah.
We can drink ten, twelve cups for each.
Yeah. I know, we get into budget time, it takes a lot of coffee. Good morning, Dan. I don't, there we are. Well, we got, uh, DD seven, two forty seven, Humboldt Webster County. Uh, this is basically some plans, uh, for a solar farm down in Webster County which involves our drainage district, our joint drainage, drainage district, so... You wanna kind of fill us in what's going on and ask, tell us why we have the, uh...
Yeah. Just give us a second here. Okay, um, so, yeah, it, it saves a great break fill in, all in all, um, most of the land, in fact, it'll be in Webster County. Um, and essentially there's a large solar farm going down again, uh, section twenty, and, uh, as far as two forty seven, seven is concerned, uh, sections twenty five, twenty six, thirty five, thirty six, of, uh, badge of township, and then also thirty one, newer township, one of the split township, which, the five townships, but they're all kind of grouped, where the, where the township's led together. Um, but really, as far as two forty seven seven, still like you said, you said, um, there's gonna be some of the farthest borders, some open ditch along there. Um, so, really, the, as far as I can, primary concern is gonna be making sure that, um, right away, you still the ditches is maintained as well as, um, you know, and drainage going into it. Um, but it should be pretty straightforward, um, as far as two forty seven seven is answered, um, you have some other concerns with some of the neighboring districts, um, that come into that ditch, I'm making sure that, you know, plenty of right way over the top of the tile, um, and, um, then, and all, uh, Webster County supervisors have expressed some interest in making sure that any of the private tiles are maintained. Uh, but really, it's, it's a pretty, pretty straightforward thing, um, developers have put a lot of effort into planning it out and they're, uh, very easy to get a hold of, and I'm usually worried with, um...
I had a question for you. Is your firm working with the solar company also, or are you just representing Webster County and us? I mean, actually, we should probably go through the first steps here. Let's get a, a motion to appoint a quarter engineering to review the plans. That's what we have to do first.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
We have a first and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now you're officially hired to represent us.
All right, uh, yeah, so, um, essentially, and, and I'm not entirely sure how you guys tend to, tend to run those things, but, um, I believe Webster County appointed us, well, I know they appointed us, but I believe that how it operates is, um, they have, uh, the, uh, the developer paying the county and then that money is taken directly to us as opposed to having to, um, so, a, a primary client is, of course, is county, uh, you guys as well, um, and then, uh, that's paid by the developers.
Okay.
And then we, we just, are simply in contact with the developer working alongside them to make sure that, um, that, uh, we all continue to leave it in, um...
And you...
Hopefully, we're able to put this thing in, um, I'm not sure if I'm getting it, but ultimately, my, my priority, making sure things are maintained properly.
Is there, is there any county mains through this solar field? Looks like there is.
Yeah, um, and, uh, so, uh, Drainage District one ninety four, that's county main, right there in the center of it, um, that, that's really the primary one, that's all, one ninety four is solely in Webster County.
Yes, it doesn't affect us any.
Which borders, uh, the, the joint district two forty seven seven, Drainage District fifty seven borders back to the south, um, we actually initially did clean out of that one, um, because we're pretty familiar with, um, facilities in there, um, there's one tile of that district that, um, kind of pokes into the side of the facility, um, so we'll, uh, I think, to make sure we get a firm grasp of where that's located, but I don't think a lot of issues with that. Um, and again, I know the county, county have expressed concern in making, making sure that, um, private tiles are maintained, uh, despite the, of course, it's a completely different, uh, construction setup, um, so, that's great for anything really near to here, but at the end of the day, we'll make sure that, like, drainage is, um, maintained to, uh, like, um, part of this is, is, uh, like, uh, over for, by our, like, we have, so, in a case where, um, the tile solely benefits the solar farm, it's really up to them, the tile, they want to maintain both private tiles, of course, not the master tile, um, but if there's a private tile that moves through there, drains some joint layer, then, of course, we can make sure that's continuing to drain, um, while it's not being stopped up there.
With that?
There's a lot of work to do.
Yeah, but as Humboldt County's concerns are, we're just, uh, protecting our outlet at the moment, so...
Sure.
All right. Well, as long as you keep them out of the right way for the open ditch down there, keep them back to thirty-three feet, we'll be good. Isn't that what it is, from the top of the, top of the back of the slope?
Okay. Thirty-three, thirty-three feet from the top of the slope, and that's, that's been established in, I heard, in passing, uh, county, county wise.
I think our reach one sometimes.
I think it varies a lot, but, uh, I've been at a lot of meetings, and some, some have said up to fifty, I, you know, I've heard all kinds of, we like to have a minimum of thirty-three feet.
Okay.
I mean, it's down there in Webster County, so it's actually their decision.
Okay.
My question, I, and we don't have anything to do with it, but where that tile main was shooting, what would happen if they'd have to fix one of those mains and, um, solar things are sitting right over the top of it, will that all be spelled out?
Uh, that's their problem.
Well, I know it's their problem, but I guess this stuff usually follows from one county to the next.
Yeah.
Someone sees that, I guess I'm just curious to know if that's gonna be in the language of the...
That's what I was asking about for the county meeting, man, but...
I think, I think your discussion quite as well, but if I'm, if I'm hearing it correctly, Bruce, you're, you're wondering if there was a solar panel built over top of one of the, one of the pre-service county mains, um, who, how would that be maintained in the future, that it would fall out or...
Right, that's right, that's the question.
Okay, uh, yeah, so that, that's gonna be something we're looking at on the front end, uh, making sure that, is not, the, the best, the best solution as far as we're concerned is that, that simply our panels don't go to the top of it, um, and I think that's, that's, uh, that's the general understanding. Um, the, the developer has also offered ideas such as relocating tile into the areas where, um, where the dollars make sense for that. Um, obviously relocating tile can be a little tricky as far as making sure that everything is hooked up correctly, at the end of the day, you know, making the best, um, so, you know, it, it's a negotiating point, of course, it's not our first, first point of action, um, and that, even, even as far as, uh, not building anything over the top of the tile, okay, we want to find how wide that needs to be to allow what to get in there efficiently, um, to do what needs to be done, and if they can't get in there efficiently, you know, can we offset the cost somehow, um, to that end? Uh, so that's all stuff that we're gonna be looking through, with the developers, to make sure we can do a, make a little payment.
But look, those, those footings, aren't they like six foot deep?
Um, I have some, I have seen some, some metal drawings on that, and sound is all right, so, yeah, that, of course, we don't want, I'm hitting, hitting into the tile, uh, either, uh, but yeah, it's essentially, um, kind of free floating, you know, maybe around. I forget what the depth is.
I don't even know, did it say how many there are?
I'm looking at the...
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm looking at the map that, um, Trish gave me and, uh, it seems to me, Rick, you mentioned something about thirty-three, and when you look at the map, it's a fifty-foot right away set back, that's the thing that you're talking about, because on the Webster County part, there's, there's thirty and fifty foot right away set back.
There you go.
You know, that's a good question, and, uh, I'll have to talk to them to make sure that that's fifty foot from the top of the slope, or, you know, the center of the tree, which is...
Yeah. From everything I've read, they always go from the top of the slope. Okay. Every question, take the young people's out.
Do we want to have the same thing then, if it's fifty foot in, um, Webster, would we want to do fifty foot too? What do you think then?
I don't believe they're doing anything actually.
They're not, they're not doing anything in Humboldt County, so it really doesn't pertain to us.
Oh, gotcha, okay, I just noticed you mentioned something about the thirty-three.
Well, we have at times when we're talking back, so I think that's the number we use for, for, uh, our room to throw, or, or, you know, we pay damages, not any closer than thirty, it would go about thirty-three feet, and we don't pay damages for anything within thirty-three feet of the ditch, for when we clean the ditch or whatever.
Okay, thanks.
So...
So, will this allow, like, if we have a clean out, to facilitate for that, if you're sure for, I know, like, the power lines, we couldn't, there was a, a restriction for overhead and all that, will this be ample distance in that for clean out?
Yeah, exactly, that, that would be cool, with the thirty-three foot, um, to be allowed for clean out, um, now, uh, you know, that's a great question with overhead power lines, there's ample distance for, for, and now, and it's operating where it is, so, I believe that, um, lowest of the infrastructure here, you know, the, the, uh, overhead is, well, so, so, um, that's really, like, what Trish had, she was talking.
Yeah, so what is your recommendation for easement or whatever?
For easement?
Yeah.
You know, it's fifty foot from the top of the slope back, I think that's a, that's a great number, um, but we, we're still digging into that, so we'll have everything solid as far as that goes.
Okay.
This district that, the tile, the district tile, the cross, the, the one, your county's part, uh, it's a, it's a parallel tile system, so two tiles, twenty-six apart, um, so that opens up a pretty good path, I think, so we'll have some, some, size, particularly with the trenching, you know, and everything like that, so we're still digging through that, um, I think if we, uh, I don't know... You know, it's fifty foot from the top of the slope back, I think that's a, that's a great number, um, but we, we're still digging into that, so we'll have it things solid as far as that goes, um, the district that, the tile, the district tile that crosses, because of what's your county's part, uh, it's a, it's a parallel tile system, so two tiles, twenty feet apart, um, so that opens up a pretty good path, I think, to have some, uh, much size, particularly with the training, you know, and everything like that, so we're still playing through that, um, I think if we, uh, I don't know if we necessarily got appointed yet by Webster County, even if they haven't, uh, yet, um, they, they're gonna do that, either they have, or...
Tomorrow's their meeting, so...
Gateway, that's already been, essentially, tipped out.
Okay.
But yeah, this is all, this is all very, really very, uh, intense.
Okay. I don't, you guys have any more questions? I think you got all our questions answered, so as long as it's greater than their setbacks, more than what we request, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Dan.
All right, well, appreciate that, sir, you have to make all this.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now, have we done this private tile crossing in Watuska section?
We did that.
That piece. Yeah, okay. All right. And we accepted the application, accepted the hearing? You got that all taken care of, so...
I mean, you had a smooth meeting.
Yeah, I checked this pretty quick.
Twenty-fifth?
You guys got anything else for Trish in drainage?
Nope. Do you have anything else?
You gotta accept the application and...
Yeah, I don't know if we formally accepted the application. We did set the hearing, did.
Right, you haven't accepted the application yet.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the application.
And just to reiterate, that's the hefty one we're back, that we set the January twenty-fifth.
Yeah, this watershed development land which benefits lands in section seven and eighteen of Watuska township.
So, I will make a motion to accept that application.
A second.
You have a second, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Majority, there's, motion carries. Okay, now it's all formally done.
If Trish doesn't have any, I make a motion to go to drainage.
Got a first and a second from Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, take a motion, go on and...
I don't wanna take all of them.
I'll make a motion to...
Motion to adjourn? Got a second from Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She might wanna keep that for...
Motion carries, we are adjourned at nine forty...
Three.
Three.